Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order tonight, please. Welcome to those of you who are coming to, sitting in to watch and the rest of you who are here to do business. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I see the flag behind Michael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cindy, before we approve the agenda, we have a change in the order of the agenda.
All right.
So we will go, the executive session, number three, the presentations is going to be moved to the end after number six.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right, with that change, a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Jason and Linda, discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda? Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. At this time, we will be going into an executive session. So I would need a motion, please, to go into the session, executive session, to discuss, to discuss a legal matter. Motion, John and Tina?
Yes.
Discussion, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Michael, do you want to give, or Tina, our guest, let them know what's happening and for how long?
So we're gonna go into executive session. I would think that we're approximately 30 minutes out. So if the public were to play it safe, 20 of, they can enter the waiting room. And I would think by 6:45, we should be able to be back fully in public session.
It looks like everyone is gone. I'm going to turn off the recording. Would you like me to go ahead and let all the guests in? We have nine people waiting.
Yes. Are you all set, Tina?
Everyone is in now, yeah.
All right, good. We're back in business, back in open session. You'll recall, we're going to put number three, the presentations, later in the agenda. So going on to number four, which is the election of BOSI's board members and the BOSI's administrative budget vote. This is the reason we had to have our meeting on Wednesday night instead of Tuesday, because all school boards are voting on these tonight, as part of our BOSI's. And so, under, under A, you'll, you'll see the, the people who are being nominated for those BOSI seats. There are six of them, and there are four open seats. So moving on, does someone want to make a motion for the, the first seat? Jason?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Pamela Pendleton.
Is there a second? Tina? Any discussion? Jason, you made the motion. Do you want to say something about Pam and her ability here that?
I can't think of a better nominee for the BOSI School Board, with everything and her dedication to education. I think she'll do great there.
She's one of, she's one of ours, isn't she? She taught here for many, many years. Pam and her dogs did. So, motion is on the floor. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
And myself. Motion is carried. Is there a, another motion? For someone else? Linda?
I would like to nominate OJ Sailor.
I'd second that.
Oh my, OJ Sailor. Do you want to say something about him, T, Linda?
It's, it's her.
I'm sorry.
I have gotten to know her on the legislative committee for county. Not only is she sharp, she is totally dedicated to students and is a very hard worker for progress.
Any other discussion? Then, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion is carried. For seat number three. Linda, do you want to make another motion?
Yes, Lynn Gay.
Is there a second?
I will, Tina.
Tina? And, do you want to say something, Linda?
Lynn, yeah, she has been serving on BOSI's committees and on the board for a number of years. She has a great background. She knows everything backward and forward, and I think she's a great expert to have there on the BOSI's.
I would agree. Any other discussion? Then, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta? Oh, Jason?
Yes.
And yeah, yes, me. There is one more seat, seat four. Does anyone want to make a motion? Do you know these people? The three that are left are John Ed, John Ediman, Douglas Hammond, and Catherine Syracuse. John?
I'll make a motion for John Ediman.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Isetta? John, do you want to say something about John?
Only from his resume, he's on the New York School Board first year. He's in Laurel House, which is a hospice house, St. Michael's Church. He's, owns a newspaper, he's a journalist in Palmyra. So I think he's, he's up and coming, I think, will gain experience, he's interested, it sounds like. I don't know him at all, personally.
And the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Then, all those in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
And I will vote for John. So that passes for John. And now, B, motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Wayne Finger Lakes BOSI's administrative budget. A motion?
Don't move.
Who said that?
Me, Paul.
Paul and John, a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All who approve, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta? And I will approve. Motion is carried. We come now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda goes from page two to the top of page five. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move it.
Linda, and a second?
Tina?
I second.
Tina, all right. Discussion?
I would just like to make mention of Tina Goodman, who is retiring. She has been with us for years and years, and in many different areas, and has done some really interesting things at our high school. I know her, she's been a real attribute to the school.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have one, Cindy.
Paul, yeah?
Yeah, an item D with regard to joining the Red Creek School and ours for
Yes.
baseball. Yeah, this is all about helping out our fellow rural district of Red Creek. Through the work of Mark, our new AD, Mark Lenkenberg, Jay Reynolds, Cody Lapp, Phil McDermott, Brendan Kepcinski, and myself, we actually have enough players to field our two teams. So the deal here is that Red Creek has one, I think he's a junior, he's too old to play JV. He doesn't have a team at Red Creek, they don't have a varsity team. So we're really allowing him to come and play with us, and we've been assured it doesn't change our status for the Section Five, for the championships. And we also know this young man because he played with us two years, so I just want everyone to know that our district's doing fine. This is all about helping out one individual from a fellow district. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I think it's great that we're doing that.
Anyone else?
I second what John said.
All right, hearing no more discussion. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
And I approve. Motion is carried. At this time, after the consent agenda, we will put our number three back into place here, and this is the presentation by SWBR and Campus Construction. Turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody, it's Kevin. I'll start, but I do know that Steve is on the line from SWBR. Just a reminder from the last update, we had advised that we collectively put together a bid package that was publicly advertised. It was scope that was built around addressing the incidental asbestos disturbance, both in the auditorium, adjacent west corridor, the ELA room and PE room. And in addition to that, the OSHA cleanup that was identified as a need through the main arcade corridor and the eastern vestibule. On April 20th, we hosted the bid opening. We were happy, or we are happy to report, there were seven competitive bids submitted. So with seven submissions, we do think the district received good competitive value. The low apparent bidder, which you'll see in our letter that should have been provided, was MJ Contracting. They're fairly local. After opening of bids, and since then, we have had an in-person meeting with them to do like a pre-award conference. We de-scoped and we made sure they had a great understanding of the project, the scope, the schedule, the logistics of the site and so forth. They also provided their, their requested AIA contractor qualification documents and such. They've proven to be a responsible bid, and therefore we have gone forward to provide you a letter of recommendation for award. So we're here tonight to answer questions on that. We had already previously advised on the scope and the intent. But we did, we do have a timeline that if they are awarded tonight, we can start issuing contracts and get them mobilized and ready to go. Any question?
Paul?
Yeah, Kevin, you said they were reasonably local, and it may have been written somewhere, but I don't remember. Where are they from?
Utica.
Yeah, you, the Utica, Syracuse, Utica region.
Yeah, I guess that's reasonably local.
Anyone else? Steve, anything you want to add?
No, Kevin covered it very well. If there are any questions, you know, about the technical scope, I'd be happy to answer those. But in terms of the recommendation and the de-scoping, I did participate in that along with the abatement designer, Sue Hilton from Lew Engineers. And so, as Kevin said, we are comfortable that they understand the scope and the schedule and, and concur with the recommendation to award.
It was probably in there, but what's the timeline on it? Well, how, if they started tomorrow morning, how long would it take to complete?
So the total timeline for everything will be into the first week of July. So, but let me just walk through the big picture. We won't be able to get them to start at as early as tomorrow. We strongly recommend it. Wouldn't do anything without having a contract in hand and insurance for your protection, but we are expediting everything. We'd like to get them out on site next week. They've got a sequence, but between all three spaces I mentioned, they'll be completed with the cleanup and the abatement. We're showing on, by contract, by June 22nd. And then what pushes from June 22nd into the first week of July is a couple of the build backs. If you remember, in the ELA rooms, after the abatement and cleanup is completed, there's a floor leveling installation that's needed and a new ceiling system. So by June 22nd, we'll be able to open up the rest of that first floor, because the abatement will be cleaned and, you know, approved to reoccupy the space is the goal. And then this contract, though, and why we wrote it to go into July, does have a little bit of reconstruction, like I said, in the ELA rooms. So that's the, that's the big picture timeline.
Anyone else? Paul?
Yeah, Kevin, were there any surprises on the walk-through on the second and third floor?
No pers, no surprises. We're a little bit disappointed that the contractors didn't achieve more of 100% punchless completion. There, we did do a full inspection earlier this week. We have still identified with the project team some areas of concern that need to be addressed, so it's unfortunately part of the construction process, but wouldn't say we were alarmed or surprised, just a little disappointed that they didn't get further along.
Good, thank you.
Are there plugins for electric vehicles on the parking lot? I thought I saw some there.
Go ahead, Steve.
The signs, the signs are there at least.
Oh, well, that's a good sign. I'll, I will, I'll double check and make sure that we answer the question, question correctly, once I take a look at those documents. So Mike, we'll send that answer through you.
Well, it's become more important, too, for future projects, when, when you hear GM and Ford and Toyota and so on are all going to make electric in a handful of years, basically. That's going to be part of every project in the whole country.
That was part of the original lead certification that we were going for.
Okay.
And I believe it came out with that piece.
Well, I hope we have four or five where the signs are at least.
I suppose that's necessary, but I would hope they would charge their cars at home on their own dollar, not on ours.
A good point.
Well, I wondered if they had meters on them or something, I don't know. Point receptacles. But we'll get back to you with that answer, and I did misspeak. I think they're from Oneida, so Kevin was right, correcting me. The MJ's between Syracuse and Oneida, but we'll get back to you on the charging stations. But as he said, you know, it's nice to have seven bidders come in, especially given the circumstances that we faced with the asbestos issue, period.
Anything else? For campus or SWRB? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
We'll move on in our agenda to the policies. Tonight, we are on a second read, which means that we can adopt tonight. So I take a motion to approve the, the two policies. The district standards and guidelines for webpage publishing and the policy on student gender identity.
To a discussion, Lucinda?
Just a sec, let's get it on the floor.
Okay.
Linda, I said a motion?
Yes.
Yes, and a second, Isetta? All right, now discussion. Jason?
I think Policy 7552 is probably one of the most important policies that we've looked at since I've been a board member. In ensuring that our district is welcoming and encouraging to all of our students. We do have another policy referring to student gender identity. And I was just curious if we were going to, I started reading it and trying to look for similarities between the two.
It replaces it, I think.
I'm sorry. I apologize, John. What was that?
I think it replaces it. Correct. That, that is the case. You are, you are adopting the new policy as it's written. This is the second read, so you are correct.
I, I, I understand that. The thing that I've had a little trouble with is a lot of the previous policies that we've updated have had strike-throughs. And this is just an entirely new policy, it looks like, as, as opposed to a revision. But I had, I had a couple of questions regarding athletics, which I know a lot of it is out of our hands when it comes to Section Five. But there's some specific requirements for middle school students who choose to participate in high school sports. And I just, I guess I wanted to know if by adopting this policy, are we at the mercy of Section Five and the requirements for more directly female high school sports players in their ability to do so? Without getting into detail, I guess that's, I guess that's my question.
So I, what I would have to say is, Mark is online, but anything that we do with respect to athletics and Policy 7552 would be compliant with one another. And so, Mark, do you want to weigh in on the specifics regarding gender identity and athletics as it's related to today?
Sure, the State Athletic Association, which we, is part of Section Five, which is the overall governing body, and has adjusted some of their policies and procedures, you know, to, to match that. So we would, we would always follow all of those policies and procedures when moving forward with any, any students that participate.
I guess more just looking forward and thinking of anything that might come up. I guess my concern would be the, if the situation arose where an eighth grade student who identifies as a female was trying out for varsity athletics and was able to do so, and then we have a eighth grade student who, I, I don't, I don't mean to offend anybody with my verbiage, so please don't take it that way. An eighth grade female who's trying out for the same, but doesn't, hasn't reached the puberty portion of the requirements from what, from what I understand. It would kind of be demoralizing, I think, in some points to that, if if both students weren't held to the same standard. Can you shed some light on that, Mark?
So that's a pretty complex question, so why don't we do this? Because I think we've got to get clarity around what you're asking us. I, I think I have an idea, but why, hearing that question for the first time, and if, Mark, you don't feel comfortable answering, don't, because we can put it in print and answer it to the board and read it out publicly next time. But I basically think what you're asking us is exactly what he described a minute ago, that we would follow all New York State guidelines and subsequently, Section Five guidelines, and make sure our policy was aligned to that. And rather than get specific to one particular potential scenario, I, I think we've got to take that case by case, and I think in this particular situation, you know, the speculation on what ifs, and I don't mean to be blunt, but I think it'd be best to take that case by case and say, you know, as long as we're referring to what New York State is saying, as long as we're referring to what Section Five is saying, that, that we would make sure we're compliant with everything that the student is entitled to, both legally and ethically.
Okay, I can
I would agree with that.
I can move on from that, thank you for that. My only other question on that policy was under the section titled "Other School Activities." And there was a line that says, "Teachers and school employees will make every effort to separate students based on factors other than gender where practicable." What, what other factors are we referring to?
There, I think they were talking about pronoun usage, letters of commendation, or if you will, discipline.
But this was, this was speaking to overnight accommodations.
So that could be like a senior trip, if they're going to Washington, if they're going out of town on a camping trip or extracurricular athletic event, that you can no longer just factor gender as a rule for separating people out. And it's, it's similar to like a phys ed lesson, where in the past, people would be separated out based on gender. They're saying, consider other factors. So take it case by case and look at the child versus what traditionally might have been done in the past. We were, you know, part of the indications we got was have to be on an individual basis. And they, that student would participate with the group they identify with.
Yeah, I'd like to underline that. Consistently asserted school. So again, Jason, and for everyone else, this isn't someone that can come up with a whim and say, hey, I got an idea, I want to, no. They have to, this has to been a demonstrated consistent position.
Yeah, good point. We made that over and over and over again. It can't be a whim, it has to be a consistent viewpoint that that person has.
Okay, more discussion? All right, then, we will vote to approve the two policies. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta? And I will, the motion is carried. At this time, I would like At this time, I would like a a motion to um add uh an item to the agenda. May I add an agenda item, please? Motion? Yeah, Linda and Paul? Discussion? John? Approve?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isada? Motion is carried. All right, let me find the motion. Um right. And now I will ask someone to uh move this resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to the education law, accepts the, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Um where am I? Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon rep- recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to the education law, authorizes the awarding a bid, authorizes awarding a bid to the bidder deemed to be the lowest responsible uh meeting the bid specifications as follows. And that would be the bidder, uh MJ's Contracting Services Incorporated, uh three seventy-nine North St- Stafford Avenue, Suite Three, Waterville, New York, uh one three four eight zero. A motion to approve.
Tina?
John and Tina. Discussion? All in favor. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isada? Yes. Motion is carried. Oh, I wasn't supposed to do that.
Okay.
We have to start that 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 voting over. Tina has to call the a roll. That's official. Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isada?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Okay, um at this time, does anyone have any good news they want to share? John?
I do. Uh in the paper, we have um North Rose Wilkett Boys Volleyball Class B sectional brackets. They beat Pavilion slash York. And they'll be up against number one Spencerport in the near future. Also on Facebook, I noticed um Earth Day was celebrated by our curriculum coordinator and the high school principal, Mr. Bradley, and a student, Leah A. Or cleanup on Third Creek and and a pass board member at Megan. And they had a very nice group of pictures of them picking up things along the beach at Third Creek. Which is, thank you.
Anyone else? Paul?
I've got uh several uh newspaper article, one of Bob's favorites uh for bus drivers. One of our former, from from North Rose, Desiree Carson has been promoted to the rank of sergeant in the Army National Guard. This is the uh high school um house competition. So nice article in the paper too, and then if you, and I mentioned that if you if you go by the auditor or the uh entryway, a lot of these are posted. And by the way, for the with regard to the competition, the class of twenty-one is leading. Uh lots of good things in sports. John, thank you for mentioning the one about the boys volleyball. Yep, uh it's going to be a tough match tonight, but we're wishing them the best of luck. Um the girls are playing their quarterfinals tonight. And Mark, I see that you're on. Do you have any update on that?
Yes, uh quickly, uh North Rose won the first uh game. Wellsville won the second game. Uh Norris, North Rose won the third game. We're in the fourth game, and I'm having trouble trying to keep up with the score because not showing the scoreboard much, so uh it looks like it's back and forth in the fourth game. So hopefully we can uh win it in the fourth game and get on the bus and head home since we're, it's going to be a late night.
Okay, I'd like to mention a few. Thank you, Mark. I'd like to mention a few more things. Uh there there's several of our uh athletes have been mentioned in the Democrat Chronicle All-Great Rochester Honorable Mention Selections. So I want to read through these. These are for boys, women. Colby Balcom was first team all-league all-star. Matthew Cole, all-league uh honorable mention. Kaden Milliman, honorable mention. Matthew Ingersoll, all ma- uh all-league honorable mention. Then in wrestling, uh this same uh Democrat and Chronic All-Great Rochester Honorable Mention Selections, Richard Delpa was a central wrestling first-team all-star. Logan Caves, first uh this is a Finger Lake Central Wrestling first-team all-star. Clayton Reed, also first-team all-star and finished second place in the section five championships. And then, of course, you know, Quentin and the and uh others were selected. And I want to mention that last last uh meeting, I referred to a Elizabeth Waterman as a Hannah and her her correct name, she goes by Lisa, not Lisa, but Lisa. So uh she was uh the terrific twenty-one uh member and also uh you may recall, she won the skull, the uh sportsmanship award. So gotta wait, listen.
Anyone else?
The good news that I have is that the elementary school is back to four days a week, and there's nothing more encouraging than pulling up in the morning and seeing all those kids run in. So happy. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, good, good. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's update. Mike? Mike, I think you're muted. Michael?
Yep, I I got you.
Oh, okay.
Megan said I've never sounded so good except for when I'm muted. So I just want to kind of piggyback on a few things that have already been highlighted. You know, there are a lot of good things to celebrate th- this point in time of year. So we've entered into the fourth quarter. So it's hard to believe that, you know, we have nine weeks of school left. But if you take a look at where where we're at in terms of enrollment overall, um it's already been mentioned. So pre-K through eight, we're back in school in session four days a week. You know, our total enrollment at this point in time as of Monday, we have eleven hundred and eighteen students overall. We have eight hundred and eighty-nine attending in person and two hundred and twenty-nine that are in virtual settings. So you know, thinking forward, it's clear that virtual uh academics is probably here to stay for the foreseeable future. Also, you know, last week, three through eight ELA assessments took place, the first time that we were using computer-based testing on a large scale, so a hundred percent. And remarkably, uh there were no glitches. So that's a a nice thing to get under our belt. And again, this is something that's not going to count against teachers and it's not going to count against students. Uh but we will look at that data once we get the information back, and that will inform our instruction in terms of how we move forward. Additionally, you know, a- as was mentioned, the elementary and middle school is going to look a little different because of the four-day-a-week instruction in person and the ability to reduce from six feet of social distancing down to three. There are a lot of things that are happening. It's a large credit due to the staff. You know, and again, it's a very big team effort, whether it was transportation, maintenance, instructions, support or administration. The the return to school went remarkably well on Monday. Um I think that feedback I got from the Director of Transportation was that our runtime was off by about four minutes. So the fact that it was the second first day of school and we were only off by four minutes is cause for celebration. The other piece at the elementary level that really we're entering into that last quarter, really a big time for celebrations. As you know, Memorial Day, a big, big item here at North Rose Wilkett Elementary. The Flag Day, the Field Day celebrations, uh UPK and fourth grade graduation are also something um that we're really looking forward to students having that return return to normalcy. Uh the middle school, as we said, they're also uh a a large part back four days, a a week of direct instruction. But I think what's remarkable, given all the different circumstances, if you take a look at the forty-four percent of our students having achieved honor roll, high honor roll, or principal honor roll for third quarter, that's cause for celebration. And the high school academically, you know, like to say that fifty-two percent of our students have achieved merit roll, honor roll, principals honor roll or high. So there are a lot of good things happening as you saw last month at the elementary level. And I would second that they're also happening at the middle school and high school level as well. And you know, if you take a look at this um second sentence under high school.
Are you sharing your screen? As we can't see your screen, sorry.
Nobody else can see it either?
No.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what's going on here. Boy.
I said, the settings are set, so you should be able to share your screen.
Can you see it now?
No.
I don't know what's going on.
There, there you go.
Okay, so just to kind of go back to where we were, I I I'm not going to start over, but you know, right here, if you look at it, the the middle school, the forty-four percent success rate in terms of achieving honor roll status, that's pretty impressive. The fifty-two percent for the high school, and as I stated, pre-K through twelve, we're doing some pretty darn good things here at North Rose Wilkett. One thing I really want to point out that I'm very pleased with is that we have fifty-two, fifty-one students enrolled in a hundred and ninety-two Gemini courses. Um so that potential to earn five hundred and seventy-six college credits, that that's a actual uh dollar savings of about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for our students. So when we talk about being competitive in the the ever-changing economy, one of the ways that we can do that is by realizing dual enrollment and taking advantage of Gemini credits because many of those Gemini credits transferred to SUNY schools. So it's a, it's a thing that we want to continue to push. It's a thing that we think is a a huge savings to our students and to our families. Um and it puts them in a very good spot competitively when they enter into the college world, if that's what they choose to pursue. So some of the other things that I really want to kind of piggyback on are some of these celebrations as a district. You know, from a tech support standpoint, sometimes our departments are are often overlooked. But the district was able to purchase a hundred and twenty-one hotspots. We've been able to maintain twelve hundred Chromebooks, iPads and laptops. And Lisa Brower and her staff have done a phenomenal job. When you think about the one-to-one technology initiative and the fact that we've been able to do so much here to keep instruction moving. You know, they've also offered up the additional uh Wednesday drive-up problem solving. And that's something that really benefited not only the community, uh but I think has also put a nice feather in Lisa's department um in their cap because they were able to network and socialize with some people that they may not have interacted with in the past. No secret what our food service department has done. But if you just take a minute and look at that, the one thing that always resonates to me is that two hundred thousand meals that they've prepped since the beginning of the pandemic. So, and there's been a collaborative effort with transportation. Um and I just want to highlight a couple of things because of time purposes. But you know, in a joint effort between the North Rose Wilkett Transportation Department, the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and the New York State Police, Operation Safe Stop was a very big success in terms of um everything that's happened. And again, to piggyback the four-day-a-week return, uh multiple bus runs and accommodations were pulled off within two weeks' time from when New York State allowed us to go back and and uh change some of those restrictions. Collaborative Classroom, something you've heard about on a regular basis. Um very proud of the general ed and special ed departments for extending um learning activities to families at home and trying to really foster that homeschool connection. Little bit happy finger there. The community schools initiatives, things that we want to celebrate this time of year. The telehealth partnership, I'm pleased to say that our families will be receiving notification. Um the partnership with Rochester Regional Health and the school district is going to be out and um soliciting people's input as far as whether they're currently signed up with a healthcare practitioner from Rochester Regional Health or if they're unaffiliated with somebody, how we can go about getting them signed up with a healthcare practitioner and do telemed and the current structure that we have. So between the elementary nurse's office and the um high school nurse's office, in order to make sure uh pre-K through twelve, people are actually seen um and utilizing technology. That's something that's really good. This week, we received um, you know, a positive note that we were lucky enough to receive fourteen thousand dollars a year to support our um trauma and mental health and restorative practices as part of a grant that Bridget was able to write. And then today I received word that we were lucky enough to um benefit from a Connect Ed New York grant that Bridget wrote, where thirty-seven hotspots will be provided to the families as part of something she wrote. So again, piggybacking on the partnerships, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department and the two uh school resource officers that we have, think that oftentimes they see the uniform and they see the car, but they don't understand the daily interactions that they have and how integral um Brian and Christina are with respect to the not only Operation Safe um Stop and Safety Walks, but they're in the classrooms, they're working with our students, they're working with our staff, and very much a part of our ongoing MTSS approach. Maintenance Department, you've seen me highlight some of the things that have been done in terms of the athletic complex work, the lighting upgrades and things of that nature. Um Paul mentioned a minute ago, several student athletes being honored as all-league, all-county, and even all-great Rochester. Um and last weekend, um pleased to say that Mark conducted the Hall of Fame induction, and although it wasn't um nearly as well attended as we would like to because of COVID restrictions, it was a very positive day for several alumni from North Rose Wilkett as they were inducted. And as you heard, we're playing Wellsville now, and the boys play uh Spencerport tomorrow. So one other piece that I really want to kind of piggyback on is that, you know, National School Lunch Superhero Day is coming up, May seventh. You know, if you think about those two hundred thousand meals and you think about what this department has done and what they mean for us, um that's something that I really want to kind of, you know, highlight for the the work that those people do. Um it's it's something where, you know, they they take a great pride in what they produce. They take great pleasure in the meals that they serve. And I think that that's an incredible amount of um time, energy and dedication, even so much so that the Easter Bunny showed up at North Rose Wilkett Elementary. So as we highlight those things, um just going back to this, you know, we're really doing a great job both on a local and on a national level. The collaborative classroom spotlight last week, North Rose Wilkett Elementary was mentioned in their blog, and then in the the upcoming future, there will be a part in print media where North Rose Wilkett will be implemented. And Mrs. LaValle and the work that they did in terms of spreading the random acts of kindness, those things really can't be and shouldn't be overlooked because in this day and age, when there are so many things that we could dwell on that are negative, I really want to point out to the board and our community how much their support has meant for everything that we're able to do. Um and just remind people that the polls open um from noon to nine at the high school on May eighteenth. And when they come in to vote, they're going to see some of our performing arts in in place, that there will be choral groups singing for people. And that the sophomore class is doing a chicken barbecue to benefit their fundraising. So really, just cause for celebration tonight and and try to highlight that even during a pandemic, there are a lot of great things that are happening at North Rose Wilkett uh Central School. that even during a pandemic, there are a lot of great things that are happening at North Rose Wilkett Central School District. That's it for me.
That was wonderful to hear. Great. Thank you, Michael.
You bet, sorry that it was so tech, tech tied up at the beginning, not my forte.
I had trouble getting on tonight myself here, so. All right, that concludes our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Linda and?
I make a motion.
And Isada? All right. Discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul? Isada?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself. Motion is carried. Thank you, the meeting is adjourned, I hope you all have a good evening.
Night.
Night, everyone.